I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. May we be grateful for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Tendents.
President Schaefer. Vice President Dr. Reese.
Present.
Secretary Summers here, Treasury Hanser.
Present.
Trustee McDonough.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Whitney.
Here.
All right, good evening. All right, so changes to the board agenda are next, there are none. And then scheduled public comment for agenda items only, we had two, one just let us know that they wouldn't be here. And the other, I haven't seen enter yet. She's out there. You want to go see if she can come up now so we can. Yeah, we'll just do the consent agenda and then we'll come back to her before we go to the next item. So item number four on the agenda is the consent agenda. As you can see, it includes meeting minutes. Amanda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mike? Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're ready for you, Kaylee, when you're ready. Yep, we're waiting for you, thank you.
Inexcusable. You don't even follow your own policies. And again, they started going through my stuff without my permission and without my knowledge. So we're here to talk about the superintendent search. So on that, we had, I had printed your advertisement for that position. And you're going to have to give me a few minutes here to get organized, since I was detained out there. So I printed it out, and this is what was on the website. And it's surreal when I read it, how you describe the community. And I won't go into a lot of detail about it, but you talk about it serves over 7,000 students. You know, I think you need to be honest and say how many district students there are, there are substantially less district students. And that you've created a business here of educating non-district students. And everyone want to keep our superintendent for a right size for our district. And I don't need a superintendent for 7,000, I need a superintendent for the less than 4,000 students we have here. So I'd like you to consider that, I don't think I'm alone in that. You talk about the 11 schools and 855 employees, 855 employees for less than 4,000 or 5,000 district students, that just seems excessive. IB authorized school, I don't think that's a priority right now, I think we need to focus on our core education and recovery of the students we have, I think we need to scale back and work on what's important. Model global learning environment, again, I think you need to recalibrate, I think you're out of touch. It says that you have all of these educational awards from the MASB and a school board standard of excellence, I don't know if you've been listening to the community for the past two years? I don't know what you're excellent in, honestly. Oxford Virtual Academy, again, something that's geared towards non-district students, it may or may not have merit, but it's not a focus. You talk about the Oxford International Program. What international program are we talking about? And a virtual international program where we have foreign students receiving VIP treatment, these are your words, and 480 online courses with support of teacher mentors, using our resources? This doesn't benefit us, right? I'd like to focus again on our district students and our recovery and work on that, other than putting foreign students into our schools and into our education system who actually compete against our schools, or our kids for scholarships and college placements. There's no benefit here. And there's absolutely no benefit in the online education for them. I'd like you to stop using our resources and be honest with the person coming in. That a majority of this community is not in favor of that, right? I think you paint a very false picture of what's going on here. And you talk about the early age college program, I mean, that school in itself has been closed down, right? It doesn't really exist anymore. So I don't know where they got this information from, but it's it's not a picture of our quaint little community that you posted here, I'm going to finish with just this. You need to find a superintendent who has experience in crisis trauma recovery, critical incident recovery, and someone who has a strong history of collaboration between the community, the board, and the superintendent, and who has shown that, that they have that strength and ability to pull everyone together and have an open mind and open ears and restore the trust that this community needs so much, and work on the recovery services that these kids need. And so I think that's what you need to put in these ads.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number five, Board of Education Matters Superintendent Search Planning Discussion. And today we have with us Serena from Hazard Young Atia. And I will hand it over to you to kind of walk us through our agenda of items that were posted to Board Book. Welcome, by the way.
Thank you so much, it's a pleasure to meet all of you in person, I think you knew me virtually, so I want to first start with introducing myself. My name is Dr. Serena Shivers, and I am a search consultant for HYA. During the day, I am the deputy for Michigan Superintendents Association. I am a former superintendent here in Michigan, I was a superintendent for five years in southeast Michigan. I also was here at one point in time in Oakland County, I was the curriculum director in Southfield before I became the assistant superintendent for five years for Washnott Intermediate School District. I've been a transportation director, I've been a teacher, I've been a principal. I still say my favorite job was a principal, but I absolutely love what I do. Not just working with the superintendents across the state of Michigan, but I also lead two aspiring superintendent institutes nationally. One for AASA, which is the National Superintendent Association. And another organization by the name of IEI. I lead their aspiring superintendent's academy as well. And we pull in leaders that are aspiring to either central office or one day the superintendency from across the country. This is my 31st year in public education, and I am a Michigan resident, I was asked earlier where am I from? I grew up in Midland, also in Saginaw area, but I currently reside outside of Ann Arbor, so that's where I drove the treacherous two-plus hours to join you all tonight. My goal tonight is to walk you through the planning document with the hopes of us making some determinations on some of the areas that we need to move the search further. So I'm going to ask that you follow along with me on the planning document, and I am literally going to go item by item, okay? The first item, which I've already done, is introductions. But what I want to make sure that you all know, that there is a board portal. And if you haven't received access to the board portal, or at any point in time you have challenges getting into the board portal, please reach out to me directly, you may also reach out to Mike, I think you all met Mike. And if neither one of us, you can get into Angela, will be able to reach both of us, she has me now on cell speed dial, so she can reach out to me as well. The second is the contacts during the search. So you see there that each of the board members are listed, as well as your email addresses. I and Mike serve as your search liaisons. And we, this group, will continue to work together with communication flowing from us to the board portal as we finalize documents, as we finalize the board profile, as we finalize the superintendent search documents, as we finalize the survey, focus groups, all of those things will be in the board portal for you to be able to access. Moving now on to page two of that document, you see the entire HYA search firm team. Mike is listed, then myself. That is my direct cellphone number, so you can reach me by texting me or calling me there. But I also check my HYA email constantly throughout the day. Number three has already been completed, that is the agreement, and I believe you all have a copy of the agreement with you all tonight. Number four is really what we're doing tonight, which is reviewing the search process from beginning to end. Number five is just a statement that is very common in superintendent searches, and that just means that the candidates would remain confidential until you select them for an interview, and then they become public. So 35 people apply, we don't release those 35 names, but the six candidates that you may choose from that slate of 35, for example, to interview, those would become public. So people are remained, or have to know that they will remain anonymous and confidential until they have been selected to be interviewed. That's number five. Number six is scheduling the interviews with board members, so those interviews last anywhere from about 15 to 30 minutes. I'm in the process right now, I'm conducting some interviews, and I would say that they have consistently not gone over 30 minutes, they can be done either by phone or by Zoom. And they are individual, so it would either be myself, or Mike, or another HYA associate, that we will schedule those with you all. And I think we're looking to start those after winter break, so we'll get into some dates in just a moment. Focus group, I want to stop here for just a moment and give you a chance to look at that list. This is a suggested list of focus groups. But this is where we start to really personalize this process for your community. And so we don't have to have all of the answers tonight, but I would like to stop and pause here and let you all take a look at this list and see if there's something that's already jumping out at you that's missing from this list. And we will begin to gather all of these names of organizations, groups of people, individuals that you want us to interview as part of this process, so I'll stop for a moment and let you digest. And please feel free to just start talking if you see that there's something you want me to add.
Or if you even have questions about how the interviews are conducted. Yes?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for being here, by the way, I appreciate you driving through all of that. On the list, you have private school representatives, who would that be and what does that value?
Yep, great question, so again, this list is like, kind of a template of list. Some school districts, in fact, I'm involved in a couple searches right now that just finished up, one that's currently going. They provide services for private schools in their community. Sometimes it might be specials, or it might be called extracurricular classes, or you know, each district might call them something else, but like, maybe it's music or art, or maybe you might provide foreign languages for private schools. It may not be of value in this community, but that's where we can start to X off if that doesn't exist in this community.
Actually, we do that, so thank you for drawing those two together, I just didn't, I didn't see that. But yes, we do have a lot of partnerships
Absolutely.
and hybrid programs and different types of hybrids, so
Yes.
that would be important, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions or additions or even deletions that you might see?
I have a question. So in the contract, there were four specified days, correct, for focus groups?
Correct.
Can you tell us? We're not just picking four of these, obviously. Can you give us a better idea of what that looks like, are you combining some of these into one focus group?
Another great question. We are here all day, no. We literally do start like eight o'clock in the morning and go into like seven or eight o'clock at night. Each focus group lasts 50 minutes or so, depending upon the number of people that show up and just how the conversation goes, we usually put like 30 minutes in between for transition. Some of these will be done via Zoom, like for example, one of the districts that I'm working in right now, the former board members that they want us to interview are all over the country, they retired, they're like, you know, and so we did Zoom with them because it's the most efficient way to bring them together. So there might be some that make sense to be done, you know, via Zoom. We didn't have that option a few years ago, and so we want to use that where it makes sense. But in most cases, we're here and we will work with probably with Angela and come up with a schedule so that we have a location where we might be, for example, we might work with, interview all the principals first, and then we might interview all of, if you have contractual employees, and then we will interview all instructional staff, and then we will interview all support staff, and then so on throughout the day, and then we make sure that there are, as you see at the very end, community forums for people that don't fit in any of the groups or can't come to any of those groups. We'll have one kind of open time where anybody can come that wasn't able to come. We also can simultaneously, while we do the focus groups, we can run a focus group survey, which is a little bit different than the online survey, I'll talk about that in a little bit. We can run a focus group survey because let's say somebody looks at and says, none of these work for me. But I really want to be a part of the focus group, we offer that as an option as well. But it's powerful done face-to-face where it makes sense, and then we can also provide other options where it makes sense.
Just a couple of things that are jumping out to me. As far as students, I think that we should include past students, particularly in the last couple of years.
Okay.
On community groups? Well, especially coming from a trauma-informed perspective, I think they would be able to provide good insight into what they felt was important and maybe what they didn't have or was done well during their Also, I think that there should be a dedicated session to our victims' families. And as far as community groups, one of particular importance, I think, would be the Resiliency Center staff.
So So how many do you typically fit into a day? Just, we want to make sure that we're conscious of, because we do have a very expansive community with a lot of individuals, and I think there's some desire to have like our teachers, like, I don't think they could all come to one session, obviously, they have high school, there's elementary.
Right, so
They have different needs.
That's a great question, again, I'm looking at one right now, I just pulled it up because I actually had it on my desktop. So I would say, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, about eight a day? Eight sessions a day. With students, we have like a couple different, in this particular district, we're there for three days so far. And we have three different student groups, so that there's a group one, a group two, a group three. We also have offered, because of when we are in this district, it's going to be near final, so we got a Zoom option for students as well, in case they don't want to miss a class, or coming after school just doesn't make sense because of sports and you know, things like that. So again, we'll try to be flexible and make sure that whatever we come up, we feel like the majority of your public and your community and your stakeholders would be able to fit into that. But I'm looking at this and I'm saying it's about an average of about eight sessions a day. And we, in this particular district, we're starting at nine and going until eight o'clock PM.
Yes, we have family members that sometimes struggle to get to nighttime sessions, like if they were in a community-type session, they would, we'd like to offer a daytime option as well.
Yeah. And we totally let you, I mean, these are your groups. They're for your purpose, and so we will just work with you all, we'll just be physically here and available, but however you all want that to look. Where it takes more time, obviously, is if we go to lots of different places, right? Because it won't be driving time, but we're not opposed to, if you're like, this particular center, we want you all to go there instead of them having to come here, we're not opposed to that either, it just, it just has to be fit into the agenda to make sure that there's driving time and time for us to get back to whatever session. Our typical kind of plan is that we usually are at a central office kind of location to catch certain groups of people, and then we're at a high school auditorium, or an elementary auditorium, or library to cut other groups, and then we might have like business leaders that might come during the day. Folks that can maybe get away in or not in instructional, you know, positions. Sometimes clergy or associations like that, they're more flexible during the day, but then again, we also have a Zoom option for those, if you really want us to be able to get neighboring, maybe some neighboring LEAs, school districts you want us to be able to speak with. Whatever makes sense to you all in your community, we will, we will adapt to.
Would those, say we did do a handful of Zoom sessions, would those count towards the four days? So it's just the days you're physically here?
Those are the days that we physically here, and in fact, we can do the Zoom sessions before the face-to-face or after the face-to-face, yeah.
So part of what we need to do tonight as a board is discuss, I'm just making sure and check what we would like, and then you and we'll work with Angela as kind of the puzzle scheduler.
Yes, and I will talk to you about dates just a moment when we get to the calendar portion of this, but let me say to you that the board is not, does not need to be available, the full board of those focus group days, we really, we'll have already done our individual interviews with you all. However, there may be, you know, a board member may want to come to a focus group, they're more than welcome to come, but they don't, you don't have to be available at all during that period of time.
Do you see that often, just out of curiosity, there, I feel like focus groups with those folks, maybe it's better if we are not there?
I would encourage you to probably not be there, but I've also known in some communities, they might come as a, because they're, they've got children in the district, so they have a perspective. They want to have a perspective in a parent group that might be different than from the board seat, so.
Right.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Again, please know we don't have to exhaust this list tonight, but if there's none that you want us to take off the list, this is a good starting point, based in addition to the ones that you have given me, Amanda, for us to start putting together a draft.
Thank you. Just another quick one.
Yes.
For the community, can we schedule more than one? Can we have an in-person community and then a Zoom community on a, okay.
Maybe a daytime community?
Right, nighttime. Same thing with parents, we've done Sunday, for whatever reason, Sunday, late afternoon, early evening Zooms work really well for parents. They sometimes be our largest group, so you know, that can be available as well.
Yes. Okay, back to me. So when, we'll, Erin just said it, but we'll agree on this tonight, now we have a lot of these contacts already. So is that what you're talking about, and you work with Angela on that, because we've already been doing some community groups and whatnot?
Yes. Especially if you have already existing, like, groups that are advisors for the board, or like, come together already, like, that they're an org group, you might not invite the whole group, but you might invite whoever can come from that group, or representation from that group, absolutely.
Right, because some of these could be, some of these could be combined.
Exactly.
And we were just, Erin, weren't we just doing, it was a community group, right?
Key communicators.
Yeah, exactly, so we already have a lot of that.
Yes.
And that's, and that's recent, okay.
What was the name of that group, just so I remember?
So we have key communicator groups, there's four of them, I believe, right, Angela? Yeah, there's four, they're relatively new in existence, but we've pocketed individuals together to try and get some feedback to the board. Whether they're business owners or community representatives and stuff like that, so.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, and again, we can come back to this one if there's, if there's somebody has an aha moment. The next item is the online survey, which is a little bit different than the focus groups. The questions are slightly different, and the online survey is really targeting those six groups that you see below. Administrator, directors, sort of licensed staff, support group, parent of students attending your school, community member, and students themselves. And the online survey is something that actually would open up sooner than the focus groups. And the kind of difference between the two of them is, one of them, we pull together information to create your district profile, which really kind of tells everything about the district and the community, and it lets the person, primarily the person that is a part of that slate of candidates that you're going to interview, really get a good idea of the community and the needs of the community. The online survey is kind of asking more targeted questions around what are you looking for in your next superintendent? And what characteristics do you want in your next superintendent? You know, so it's a little bit of a different sense of questions, but they kind of all come together to create this very unique picture about your school community, so we are proposing to open up the online survey the end of January, well, close to the end, January 25th. And it would run for two weeks until February 9th. And the online survey, the only thing that we need for you all, in order for us to start putting together the online survey, is to know what other languages you run it in. That's not necessarily a question I'm going to be asking the board, but it will be a question that I will be asking the interim superintendent and Angela to work with the building principal and your marketing and your media team, to however many languages you might already translate things, and that's what we'll do, right, for your online survey. And so that will be released sooner than we start our focus groups, but I wanted you to be aware of that as well.
So I just, I want to reiterate, I'm sorry, Amanda. So we have ten forced choice question and four open-ended, will we get to see that prior to it going out, or is that proprietary?
The questions?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you, yes. I think they're actually on the document, they're on the focus group document. They're, I think they're actually on the document, they're on the focus group document.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I did look at that survey earlier and went through, I, I left it unfinished, so you don't have. But there wasn't a section for additional notes, is that?
Oh, I'll make a note of that.
Okay, and if you could also, I don't know if it's possible to include at the end, at the last page, an email address for where they can send additional thoughts or other suggestions?
Wouldn't that just be an open-ended, or?
So, I mean, just like me, I'm just assuming that something comes to you the next day and you go, oh, I forgot that. And I really wish I had said that, so.
And you go back to the interview, I mean, the survey, and it says you've already submitted a response, and you can't, you can't do it again.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, I will circle back to Mike, I don't know the answer to that question, but I'll ask Mike and find out for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, I'm going to move on to number nine, this is notific, oh, go ahead.
I did have one other question. Now, on these online surveys, so these are open for every person in these categories? Okay, and do you have, how do you manage the responses so that people, the same person is not sending multiple responses?
I think it's kind of like what I was just saying to her, if they do it for, like, if somebody takes the time and goes to five, 10 different devices, I mean, we can't really control that, but they will have to select which category they, you know, fit in, yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
For the students, is it all students of all ages and is the language?
I think it's middle and, I think it's sixth grade and up.
Sixth and up.
But I will check that as well, but I'm almost positive that it's sixth grade and up, in terms of the reading level on the, on the screen. Number of slated candidates, we typically bring six, we have brought as many as eight. Just depends on how strong the pool is, but that is what number nine is indicating to you. And some boards desire less, but that, that is typically what we bring forward, is like six candidates. There's no decision point for you there, it's just a note of, letting you know that that is what we intend to bring forward. Number 10 is related to internal candidates, and this just basically expresses HYAs' position that you treat any internal candidates the same as you would treat any external candidates, so that there's no concern about how they were treated in the process, and that they are being held to the same standards as an external candidate. Any questions about that? Okay, number 11 is, is a question point for the board. When you're conducting a national search, it is sometimes customary for the board, after the first round, to reimburse the candidate for the second or subsequent rounds. Because think, if you're thinking about it and you're thinking they come one time, and then they come back because you really like them, and then let's say we want them to spend a day in the district, so now that's a third visit. It, it's sometimes customary for boards to decide that after the first round, for the second round, and certainly if they're going to do a day in the district and the community, that they are reimbursed for their travel. But that is a decision point for the board, and I will stop talking so that you all can discuss the well of the board around reimbursement.
I can start with my opinion, if you would like, guys. I do believe that in order to get a good qualified candidate, that is something that we need to consider, is that we would reimburse them for travel talks, or should they not be from the serial?
Can I just ask if, from your experience, what you see, do you put a cap on that? Is it customary to put an expense limit there and, and let them know ahead of time? I mean, as much as I would love to travel first class sometimes.
I think you could, especially depending upon where they're coming from, you may want to revisit or visit that, you know, that cap at that point. Because I just recently traveled to California, and I'm telling you, it was, it was not pretty, just for a 14-day-in-advance ticket. And so, if they're coming from like Chicago, then of course you don't want them to, you know, pay a thousand dollars for a ticket and come first class. But if they're coming from California, it could be a thousand dollars on basic, because that's what I was on. So, you know.
So, would it be reasonable to put in expectations such as the level of airfare, the star, you know, three-star or better hotel?
Have you seen it where we're able to book travel on behalf of the candidate, that way we can control?
Yes, but I would probably, I would probably still make them pay for their airfare and reimburse them, because what if they don't come, now, you know, airline tickets, you can't use them if they're in someone else's name, so. We can probably figure out those details, because it might be a mute point if your candidate is not traveling from a long point, long. But I do think that, as we look at your slate, that that is something that we need to decide on, whether or not you're gonna, if, if you're deciding you are going to reimburse them, to what amount that you want to reimburse them. I don't know if we have to make that decision tonight, but it might be something to revisit once we see where your slate is and who you're choosing to interview.
Okay, well, I would just like to say I agree with Erin, that we should, unless anybody else opposes.
No, I agree, as long as it's just not a runaway expense, so we have an idea.
Well, and I think that would be a good indicator. If someone were to do that, you know, as we're, you know, they're asking us for reimbursement.
Twenty thousand dollars!
You know, they expect something, it's good to know that before we would possibly hire someone, so.
Fair enough, thank you. Okay, advertising options, as included in the agreement, the first two advertising options are a part of your agreement. The third one, which is two HYA group ads in EdWeek, which is a national educator publication, so it's not a HYA publication, but it's a national publication that goes out to all educators, as well as being listed in EdWeek's top for jobs for 30 days, and all, they're showcased on their website in their top jobs for seven days on the homepage, as well as online listing in AASA, which is the National Superintendents Association. There is an additional cost of $3,400 for those initial, additional locations. And the reason that we bring this forward to you is because they will look on HYAs' website, but they may look once, right? And while they're doing their other searches, EdWeek is one that continuously populates and continuously comes up in their feed over and over again. Also, it's just a, a place where people kind of go when they're looking. So, we recommend it, right? The, the 520 is if you have, if your desire as a board is to also make sure that you are bringing in candidates from diverse backgrounds. There are two associations, the Latino Administrators and Superintendents Association, and the National Alliance of Black School Education Association, there's an additional fee of 520. And then the last one, which is every school district in Michigan that posts uses MASA, which happens to be the Superintendents Association, and that's a hundred dollars. You do not have to do any of these, we highly recommend the $3,400.
For EdWeek, if I understand this correctly, the, the job posting would be on there regardless of whether we pay or not, but the, the pay option includes the showcased job posting, is that correct, or do I have it wrong?
It's actually three different things. It's two ads for HYA that would be in their print publication, and then it is being listed on their top jobs for 30 days, and then on their homepage for seven days. So, actually, it's four things that are a part of the $3,400. And then the last one that's part of $3,400 has nothing to do with EdWeek, it's AASA, which all of these together really is a saturation of a national search, which is why we bundle it together and recommend $3,400. And these are their subscription costs, not ours.
Okay. So, it wouldn't be on EdWeek if we didn't figure it out at all?
Correct.
Okay.
That is a correct statement.
Do you know the approximate number of subscribers for the print publication of EdWeek?
No, but I can find out.
Thank you.
And if you, and if the board would like to have that information before they make their decision, we're, we won't, it won't go in here until your posting goes up, so we're quite a bit aways from that, so that you can make that decision. But again, these are things that we have to make a decision about for us to complete the process, so I can find out the publication for EdWeek, and also for AASA, if you would like for me to find that out as well.
Okay, one more on that, I had looked at EdWeek's site earlier, and I saw the showcased jobs, and there were two at the top, and then you scrolled down through all the other. Is that how they always run with only two at the top, or does it depend on how many are currently paying, do they cycle through?
That's an EdWeek question, I, I can see if we can find out the answer to that question. I know that they do, they do top jobs, they do job of the week. Do you know if it was job of the week that you saw, or whether it was top jobs?
I was going to say, the one I looked was showcased jobs, that I was looking earlier.
Yeah, I know it said showcased at the top, and there were specifically two, and they were highlighted in a separate color. I just know from other job search engines that what they do is, you know, say you have a pool of 20, for sake of numbers, that are paying for those spots, but there's only two spots, they, they rotate through those 20.
Right, yes.
So, I would, I would just like to get an idea, basically, of how many views we would be expected to get.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like right now that there's 29 superintendent.
Openings.
Openings.
Yes.
On there. And there's three showcased jobs at the top right now.
And so what would be interesting is to watch it for the next seven days, see what happens, but yeah, I can find out. Yeah, I can, I don't know. I've seen two, I've seen one, so I don't know if it has something to do with the number that they have, out of the number of searches over, over every seven-day period, how it gets populated, but I can get a general idea from them about the views, okay? Yep. And the same thing for AASA, you would like that information as well? Okay, no problem. Okay, so I'm going to move on to number 12, and I'm just going to table this one and say that the decision will be made at a later time and again, when, once that information is brought back to the board. Background checks, this is just to let you all know that we do a thorough background check, above and beyond, just, you know, typical reference check, checking, obviously, and that the search, about seven to 10 days it takes for that to be conducted, and that the board gets hard copies of what's called the due diligence services report. Once that report has been completed. And then on the next page, I'm at the top of page five. Tonight, we will focus on salary, but as we progress through the process, we will be getting deeper into the fringe benefits conversation. Tonight, we need to focus on the salary range for the purpose, purpose of the posting, and so I'm going to come back to that in a moment, because I know you all have a salary chart that you have been, that has been drafted and brought together. But what I want to make sure that you all know is that the total compensation will include things like salary, annuity, any sort of board retirement payments, life insurance, fringe benefits of all different types can be considered. Oftentimes, I'm seeing merit pay that's based on performance, you know, all of those things can be things that the board discuss as part of the total compensation package. So, that is a decision that will have to be made and negotiated, obviously, as you select your candidate and go into a contractual agreement with them. So, tonight, in just a moment, once we're through our 18 items, we will pivot to talking about salary range. Number 15 is residency expectation. The board needs to determine, and it is ideal if the board determines tonight, whether or not they would like for the candidate to live within the community or within a certain range of the community. The last statement there is just to let the board know that sometimes this can impact your candidate pool, especially if you are, if you are, I'm looking at candidates within the state, they might not be able to just uproot their family and move, but you may want to consider that they live within 45 minutes, within, you know, an hour. Some districts that are really interested in bringing in a national candidate do away with the residency requirement, and some that feel as though they need someone that really knows the community and is closer to home, may choose to require the candidate to live within the community, that is a decision that the board is able to make. And I would just, I would just also say that I have seen the language say required, I have also say, I have also seen it say expected. I've also seen it say preferred, so that is also a way that you can choose to discuss.
I'll go ahead and start. I feel like it's a tough one, because we want everyone to live in Oxford, we like our town. But I do understand that it can be a rate-limiting factor in getting a really great candidate in here. So, I guess initially, I think if we were to say preferred, but not a required, would be something that I would maybe be supportive of.
I, I was trying to remember previously if we've required it, I don't think so.
I don't think we have.
Tim did not. Um, no, and so.
And one time you even couldn't, one time it was against the law to require, but now the language is that you can.
I, I also just want to bring up, wanted to bring up, I know some other professionals that are in the community and it sometimes presents a challenge when you live in the community and you're also in positions, you know, different medical professions and whatnot. Sometimes I know it happens in law enforcement, that people expect you to be on the job all the time, you know, when you're in your neighborhood, so sometimes that presents a challenge also, so I just wanted to bring that forward.
I'm, I'm good with the preferred, and, you know, travel time within a reasonable amount to the district. In the beginning, I think, I think, you know, we haven't gotten to like terms of what, what it looks like and stuff, but I don't want to limit ourselves, so that they have to be here, it might be, especially in, you know, depending on what's out there for housing and stuff inside the community.
I, I don't have any problem if somebody lives within a reasonable driving distance, but doesn't live in the community.
And if you say, if you say prefer, that kind of, I mean, part of that could be part of the, most of the reason why boards prefer it is because you want the person to be visible in the community, right? And so there's ways in the interview process that you can express that, you can convey that, and you can also see how the person plans to, you know, make that happen. If they are a sitting superintendent as part of your reference checking, and as part of even a site visit, if you choose to do it, you can find out how visible he or she is, or they are involved in their community. So, there's multiple ways to try to get at the same desire, which, when it comes down to it, most people don't really care where somebody lives. They just want to make sure that they're committed to being in the community and have a real stake and commitment to the community and the people that live in the community. So, I have written down prefer for now, as a forward.
And I don't think we had any, on the last two searches, I don't think we had any wording at all on the posting about residency, I'm not seeing it.
I'm not opposed to it, I guess my only statement for preferred is that a lot of our staff live and serve this community as well.
Great point. Transition services, number 16, just means that you won't get rid of us right after. The person is selected, we'll be here to transition the next person into the role. And totally outside of this, as part of my day job, I train all the new superintendents in the state of Michigan, so they'll still be stuck with me for a year after this process. Number 17.
I'm sorry, before you move on, could we talk a little bit more about that?
Yes.
Could you, because the document that you had sent with the pricing for additional transition services, could you explain exactly what we should expect of the, the free six months of services?
Sure.
How many meetings, what you intend to do, things like that?
It's a combination of really. It's a combination of really, well, let me step back and say, certainly the transition will look different if the person is from out of the state of Michigan than if they're in the state of Michigan. But what comes along with that transition service is making sure that they are immersed in the community, that they are connecting with like your Oakland ISD leaders, the State Department. They know who the local legislators are. I mean, all of those things that, you know, are important for a superintendent to be successful in terms of stakeholder relationships and that they're connecting and they know how to go about connecting with those relationships. The second part of it is the board, connecting with the board and also that they are transitioning into those first ninety days well with the board, building board, strong board superintendent relationships, communication, what your expectations are with communication, working through the aspects of building board relationships one-on-one as well as working with you all as a total board. Beginning their time in the community, getting to know the community, helping them come up with and ensuring that they're coming up with time well spent in each building and across the community with your chamber, for example, with your rotary, for example, you know. Really truly ensuring that they are starting off that transition, truly immersed in the community, truly connecting with at every level and in every building, starting good foundation, that they have a plan to be visible, that they have a strong working relationship with their administrative executive assistant. Just all of those things we know that really make a superintendent successful as they transition into a new role. And then it becomes a little more informal because we also provide mentoring and coaching when they, you know, they might have some, some challenges in the beginning or some things that if they are coming into this role inexperienced or as a superintendent or they're coming into this role from out of state, they may have some things that they need to understand, you know, that might be different in the state of Michigan from the state they're coming from. So really just a lot of handholding in that first six months.
And so everything that you had sent us in this packet in the link is an additional after the six months?
Yes.
Okay. So this is something we can decide closer to when we actually have a candidate, correct? Like if we wanted to do bolt-on type of things?
Absolutely. But I do recommend, I, I do recommend sometimes those transitional services, the ones that you, that already come along with agreement, the superintendent and the board, you know, in other words, I make, I recommend that you really make sure they happen. Yeah, and that you really encourage this, the new superintendent to make sure that they happen. Because I know from being a superintendent, once you get into the, you hit the ground and, you know, you're running, you know, and that is just really important in terms of the success of the candidate coming in the door.
And it wasn't in there, so I just wanna make sure there, there aren't any caps on that, you know, X amount of communications within that six months or it is, you are
No.
fully there to support the board and the superintendent for the first six months.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
And it does look different from, in every community, you know, and what that, on how much they, they reach out, so, yeah.
And I think something to keep in mind when we get to that point too is, I think, what I'm hearing you're saying is that we also have to be sure that we are supportive of the superintendent, the new superintendent taking the time to do these things and giving positive feedback, you know, and, and doing our part too with the communication and sending expectations. But I think it's also about supporting them to have the time they need also.
Absolutely. This might be, you know, even just my own thinking about it, but a way you could do that would be just wanting regular updates on what the, how is the HYA transition process going, right? That might just be a quick way to do it, yeah. Great questions. Okay, number seventeen, preparation for interview workshop. And that is a, a day or actually just really a couple of hours. It's like a couple, two or three hours where we review everything and approve the job posting. It's in workshop form where it probably would be added on to a board meeting that would be a little bit later in January going into February before we make the, the job posting public. And then the last part is the calendar, so this is where we need to spend a little bit of time. We have some dates already plugged in here, but I just wanna kinda go through this line by line. And some of these dates will not involve the board, but I just wanna make you aware of them. So I think I've talked about all of them that are on that first page. At the end of that page, the only thing that, that we haven't discussed is when we would do the focus groups. So we are looking at either January twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth to be in the district or February seventh, eighth and ninth. And the reason we have the or dates is because we don't know what's going on in your district on this date. So.
January twenty-fourth is Oxford's Got Talent night.
Well, then that won't work. The other thing that I was thinking about when I was looking at those dates is that usually finals and things like that are in the end of January, isn't that when the semester kinda ends at the end? It's the beginning of the new semester, okay. So that could be good or bad. I would tell you my preference was February seventh, eighth and ninth. And Mike, myself and Scott, who is another associate, all three of us are available those three days. So you would have a combination of the three of us on this February seventh, eighth and ninth. So I was gonna defer to Angela to see if those dates were a problem from what you can see.
Yeah, we're, we're looking as far as, you know, our school schedule.
Okay. So we'll hold the seventh, eighth and ninth. And then Angela, I'll be circling back around to your mic very quickly to kinda make sure that those dates will work. Okay? But again, the board is not needed during the, those focus groups sessions. I just wanted you to be aware of it. On the top of page six, I already mentioned opening the survey on January twenty-fifth. It would close on February ninth. You have a midwinter break the seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth. And then you see this big kinda wide space of dates because we, a lot of it will depend upon when we get certain things done. But somewhere between January sixteenth and the first of March, all of those things will happen. There's kind of, once, once it gets posted, there's kind of this constant ongoing, you know, review of applications. We just get alerts every time somebody applies and so that process is kind of ongoing as they come in. February twenty-seventh is an important date. That is a date that we are proposing to present to the board the leadership profile. So leadership profile would be the culminating docket of all those surveys and focus groups and all the information we've gathered from your stakeholders would be presented to you in a final report. It's both qualitative and quantitative, the report is. And I don't have your board dates in front of me. Is that a board meeting night for you all? Okay, it is, alright.
Can I piggyback to something?
Yes.
The January sixteenth and March first, you've been posting the position. So we have a board meeting scheduled right now, January ninth and then January, what is it, twenty-third? So I'm thinking if you guys are gonna finalize your...
It would probably need to be the January twen- it might be, I would say that we might shoot for some of it to be finalized by January ninth. And then if there's any little things hanging out there, we'll catch them on the twenty-third, okay? But the sooner that we can get it finalized, always a better, so. But thank you for that, Angela, because I didn't have that date written down. So the twenty-seventh would be a regular board meeting and we would present the, the leadership profile. And then March fourth is when we propose to present the slate to you of candidates, of the six candidates. And then right after that, your interviews would start.
So our board meeting in March is March twelfth.
So, so might we have to do eleven, twelve and thirteen?
If you do two a night, yes. If you do three a night, you could do the eleventh and twelfth. If you do three a night, you could do the eleventh, three, you could do the twelfth, have your board meeting and you could do three on the thirteenth.
Okay.
I think that more than two a night is too much.
I, I agree.
I agree.
And I don't, I don't even know about doing it on a regular board meeting night. It's just too much. We, this is really important. We need to have all the energy and focus on our superintendent interviews.
I think the key, the idea is that week. So if, if you all can look at your, to what extent you can, your personal and professional schedules and know that maybe we would do the eleventh, the thirteenth and fourteenth and then you would have a board meeting on the twelfth.
Twenty-fifth.
Yeah, oh, and the March.
Yeah.
And the spring break?
No, March twenty-fifth.
So all that before spring break, yeah, okay.
Yes, because what's important is that next week, if the stars are aligned and we can make it happen, if you have two to three candidates, they would spend a full day in the district, the week of March eighteenth. And again, the board is not needed for these days with the exception of we typically ask a board member or two to maybe have lunch with the candidate their full day that they're in the district. Other than that, they are visiting classrooms, they are visiting buildings, they are visiting important landmarks in the community that you want them to see. And so you're not needed during the day, but we might ask you to either have breakfast with them or have lunch with them. And it wouldn't obviously be the full board, it would just be a board member or two that might be available on that day. It doesn't even have to be the same two that would be available each of the days. So then we hit spring break. And then when we come back, the first week of April, you'll conduct your final interview or interviews. And then we're looking to have that person higher and improved, approved by mid-April so that he or she or they could successfully start July one.
So we have a board meeting in April ninth and then not again until the twenty-third. So looking at the whole schedule, do you think we're able to shift up? Like when I look at the first thing where it says individual interviews with the board members by phone, not until mid-January, quite frankly, I can look around the table. I, I don't know who's going anywhere, but I think we could probably make it work before mid-January considering it's...
So let's go to the dates that probably are impacting the final date. I don't think that one would impact funding because like your point is we could do that tomorrow, right? You know, like the ones that would impact the final date really is where we get to February twenty-seventh, the presenting of the profile and the slate. And the profile really probably can't be done before the twenty-seventh because we have to get all of that information in order to do it. Once we finish the focus groups, we then need about two to three weeks to actually turn the actual report around. So I don't know if that date can be moved any sooner. The one thing that I was thinking... That probably won't really help.
But the other, the other thing is, is if we have that superintendent hiring approved and announced on the four-twenty-three meeting, is that if we have it the four-twenty-three meeting or the four-nine meeting, does that affect when, I mean, really when the contract would formally begin and
Not really.
if we need two and a half months? Does it make it, do those, I'm sorry, do those two weeks make a difference?
That's a good point, Mike. I don't really know if it impacts.
Right, what are your thoughts on that?
So my initial thoughts are a lot of these individuals are contracted where they have to give a certain number of days' notice to their current employer. So I don't know if that's universally accepted or...
I, I think that if you're, if you are hiring a sitting superintendent, I think that obviously he or she or they would want to let their board know as soon as possible, but it would not be unheard of for them to not let them know until late April, early May. And certainly at that point, they're gonna know that they're a candidate. They're gonna know that.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Thank you.
In March, they're gonna know.
Yeah, they're gonna know, yes.
Something else to add, can't figure this out today, something else to add to the mix is site visits by board members.
Yes.
So we did, that has been proven beneficial on the other superintendent searches that I've been in. We really gained a lot of insight with those site visits. I don't wanna add to the calendar, but it was, it was valuable.
It might be why the four-twenty-three date might be your target so that you have time between the board final interviews, which would be April second. You would have about three, roughly three weeks to do a site visit if you chose to do so. Obviously, it's easier if they're in-state than out-of-state, but, you know, it's just a coordination point. I do agree with you, they kinda went away after COVID for some of the, you know, reasons that you could expect, but I am starting to hear them come back a little bit more than before. So it, it can provide you all another vantage point for sure. So I put down the target as being four-twenty-three.
That that's our date to hype?
Yes. If something happens, we can make it happen sooner, that would be great. And, and please keep in mind, you could always do a special board meeting if you absolutely have to. So that's an option as well for any of these things, to be quite honest with you. If we need to do a special board meeting, it is, it is an option. Okay. We're gonna park this for a little bit and just go over to the other document that has the base salary range at the top of it. You all have been given by Mike a, I think there were some, some districts that were sent over to give a comparison and Mike put together a comparison chart and sent it to you all. I don't know what he shared or if he shared at all his, the conversation around HYA's practices. Oftentimes to recommend that the beginning base salary is close to the range of where the previous superintendent ended for the starting point. It can be just a good starting point in terms of conversation is where did the last superintendent end in terms of their salary. You have in this description districts that are of like size. Some of them are in similar kinda communities. Some of them are districts that are not in the similar communities, but districts in which you may compare yourselves to for one reason or another. The range enrollment was from sixty-five hundred to eighty-five hundred. So I don't know if you all, you know, have, have had any thoughts around this or where we can start as a discussion. I will just add that all those fringe benefits are not typically in the job posting. What I have seen is a statement of something like base salary with twenty percent merit pay or ten percent merit pay or fifteen percent. I have seen language like that in the description, but, but no more, no additional language in terms of the fringe benefits beyond the merit pay. Because the merit pay is typically based on the base salary, so I think that's why that's listed there.
Gotcha. So I guess I'll go ahead and start just because I did some fast math sitting on the finance committee and looking at our five-year projections and what it is that we wanted or we were projecting that we would have to put a superintendent at based on the current base salary right now, which is, if you guys don't know, it's two oh nine, seven, seven, nine, and that's the base. If we're looking at our five-year projection, the ranges of other districts that are on this list, similar, you know, Lake Orion, Bloomfield, West Bloomfield, there's some really big ones on there. But neighboring districts like Rochester are also looking for a superintendent right now. So just keeping that in mind, you can see the differences on there. I would recommend that we probably start our range at two, two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, five-hundred dollars. And then, and that would fit in line with our budget projections for next year. And then depending on the candidate, obviously there'd be negotiation, but we wanna have room for that. And so I would say ending the top-tier range at two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, five-hundred dollars. Oh, you're welcome.
And that would be in line with districts that are also similar size as your district?
Yeah, I was also looking at the year. Yeah, I was also looking at the years. So for those
Yes.
who don't know, the Mackinac Center produces this data publicly. So you can see it. You can also see the number of years that person has experienced. So people that are, will say in Bloomfield or West Bloomfield, which has similar amount of seated students as us, they start their first year at 215 or 218.
And it also takes into account oftentimes their level of education?
Any other thoughts, comments? That's just base salary, by the way, for clarification.
I mean, looking over the other districts and stuff, size-wise and everything, it seems right in line with, right? Fortunately, education's a competitive market anyway, so we have to put ourselves where we're not, not losing candidates when they first look at that stuff. I do like the gap that you have there from the start to the cap. And again, I think we'll have to talk about the merit portion or wording of it as well, but it's a good starting point.
Erin, can you repeat those numbers for me, please?
215,5, 235, 230,500.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing the math on that, Erin. And I had just looked up some other comps because you, you can also find some of this information on the individual district websites.
Yes.
And the financial disclosure information, which is where Mackinac Center gets it from, I believe, from the state. And I was looking at comparable districts in even the most recent years, too. And that, I think that fits right in line with it and it gives us some room to negotiate, like, just like you said, thanks.
I just want to say that, that I agree with those numbers. I know Rochester is also looking and they just had their search meeting start at a base of 230. So we're still below that, but I think it's still enough to be competitive.
Yeah, their enrollment's a little bit higher than ours, so they would make sense. All right.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think it's fair. I was looking at the contracts and most of those have, as far as Mackinac is concerned, have either expired already or are expiring. So I'm just, but we're still in the ballpark, I think, in that.
I'm glad you brought that up. The data is not, for every superintendent is not the same exact year. So you do have to kind of, kind of come in in the middle there because you don't necessarily know. And some of them are not even accurate, like the year that they're in there. So there is a little bit of differences, but I do think we're still coming very, very close to a good number to start.
Good, all right. That's your number then.
The rest of this document is, is a draft. So there are, there's areas of this document that you would like some changes made. Some districts plug in videos, maybe of student performances that they would like for the candidate to be able to see. Or one community, the community made a video and so they had a video, a community video, especially if you're attracting someone. Maybe your chamber has a video about the community that you want to plug in. That's just another option that you can put a link into the document. On the second page, the qualifications, these are traditional qualifications. If you choose, you can add something like superintendent experience preferred. If that's not a preference of this board, you can leave it off.
Hang on one second, we got to reorganize our papers.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the, the posting, the draft posting that they can see.
Yep, okay. Let us switch gears, sorry.
I see that you have qualifications already on here.
Yes.
I guess I would just propose that we add that they are trauma-informed certified or willing to do so. And then as far as, as the posting, it goes on about Oxford and the points of pride quite extensively, but there is not a section, and I think that we should highly consider adding a section that talks about our desired qualities of the candidate, traits that, that we value, that the community values, so that, that they have a really good indication. I did notice that many of the job postings did include that.
Yes. And it will also come out in the profile report, too, because that's where we'll be getting that information from the stakeholders, so.
So that, we're planning to add an entirely new section, including all of those.
In the profile report, yes.
But in the actual job posting as well, right?
If you want to add characteristics of what the board is looking for, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, we can add that.
Yes, that would, I would like that.
Yeah, I, I had that question going back. When we have, that you have the job posting before we have the qualities.
Well, the profile report is really for the slate of candidates. So it's not going to deter or encourage someone to, to apply. It's really for that next level of the application, you know, process. So to the point that was just brought up by Amanda, if you wish to incorporate those characteristics in this as well, that is something that we can add to this list.
Okay. So I was, Colleen, you've done, have you done superintendent searches? So I know that the last one we did had those, had the candidate profile included on the posting. So what you're saying is we can have the posting and then when that profile is complete, we can add it to the posting?
Add the link to the post of the profile to the, yes, absolutely.
So it just looks different and that's why I'm asking the question?
I think part of it is that we're trying to get, start the generation of, of.
Get people thinking about it.
But it won't be closed before the profile report comes out. Maybe that's the way I should have said it, right? The job posting won't close before the profile report is released.
I think what Amanda wants is for us to have something on the superintendent.
Yes.
I'm speaking for you. I know you clearly can speak for yourself, sorry about that. Something that, some characteristics.
That's what I ascertained as well, yeah.
Okay, that we as a board would like.
Yes.
That we are looking for.
Do you have some that you want me to?
Well, I mean, we certainly make a big deal of our profile of a graduate.
Right.
You know, that's important to all of us. So I think we can take some of those things.
So let me also say that this may be another way to get at this. That question is actually part of the individual board interviews. So I can go back to Mike because I don't think I'm conducting him and ask can they start sooner rather than later? Because the posting is not ready to go out quite yet and so that he can incorporate those into the posting. Would that be a reasonable way to kind of get there?
Yes.
Okay, does that work for everyone? Because I think he can probably begin then, like as soon as you all are, you know, available. And I can assist if it's, if it's something in terms of time. But that might be the way, too, because we just take all of the input that you all are giving us and come up with a list of themes. So we can just import those themes into this document, if that will work. Will that work?
Works for me.
But you'll, and you'll see a draft of it, obviously, before it becomes the final posting.
Actually, I had a question on Amanda's question. When you say trauma-informed certified, is there some national type certification? I'm just not familiar. Or is it like, I'm just not sure exactly what that means?
Sure, there are. You might be able to speak a little bit more about it, too, but many, many schools provide that and provide the certification.
There is, I'm not sure of the exact wording, but, but I know what she's asking for. So we can do a little research and, and get to where she's trying to go. You want someone who has had some trauma training, basically, is what I hear you saying, yes.
Right, I just want to be sure that we're clear because it went, the way that it was said, it was like there was something specific, like a certificate that somebody can get after receiving this kind of training. So we may want to get into that a little bit more, just so we're clear about, again, our expectations.
That's a great question because there is, and I'm not quite sure that that's actually what she's asking for. I think what I hear you saying is that you want someone with some trauma experience and some training in the area of trauma-informed, working with the trauma-informed students, community, staff, you know. So there is that, that training does exist, but I'll work on with Mike on the language. And again, you'll see the draft before it's finalized.
I, I think we actually.
And I'm sorry, the other thing, I was just going to say also, I would probably want to check with Oakland ISD also on, do they offer the training there? Because if you're going to, it's going to be something that you really want the candidate to have. We want to make sure it's accessible to them as well, yeah.
I think we have a group of teachers or staff that just went through some trauma
Yeah.
star training or something like that.
Yes.
And I'm not sure who that was through, if it was the ISD or.
I just, when she was talking, I just put Oakland ISD down, so that would be the place to start.
Oakland's, and that's, they're called Oakland Schools here, our ISD, yeah.
So then the last part there is the application, what would be required in the application. And then the timeline is the dates that we just came up with on the other document will just be plugged into this timeline here. And then it lists Mike's email, my email and Scotty's email. And then your website link will be placed at the bottom there.
Can we go back, please?
Sure.
Back to talking about qualifications. So we've got administrator certification required. Do we want to say building central office or building administrative experience preferred and previous superintendent experience preferred? I just want to know if that's what, if that's what every, that's what the board wants? Do we want to say preferred or do we need to say required? I don't know everybody, how everybody feels about that.
Well, I would like to be have required, but I think it's better for us to have preferred. I think it's a bigger pool that we could draw from. I, I personally would love it if we could find somebody who has already had some experience as a superintendent, but I don't want to limit us if there is a great candidate out there who's just ready to jump in. Yeah, I.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
I don't know if, I think, I think preferred previous superintendent experience, but central office, building admin, I think we should maybe bump up, in my personal opinion.
To a required?
Yeah, I think we want more experience at minimum to that experience. We don't want a, because I mean, then, other than if, if they didn't have central office or building admin experience, then what kind of candidates are we looking at there?
Teachers, right.
I mean, straight from teachers, well, no, because it's, it's building admin even there, preferred.
I will tell you.
And so I don't, I'd be hesitant in jump, making that jump, especially in this.
I do think we have to have someone with instructional background. We have a lot of really great instructional resources here at Oxford and someone with the ability to pull them together in a meaningful way that collaborates with our community. So I would, I would second that, Mike, in, in saying that building administrator, because usually a principal was once upon a time a teacher.
Correct.
And I think the only reason why the language is preferred is that some districts are looking for non-traditional candidates that may be coming outside of education altogether. And so they don't, they don't want to limit. That may be the only reason that preferred is there.
Thank you.
But do I?
Do you need some direction for me?
Yeah, I do, because it sounds like, it sounds like I said one thing and then you guys like, huh, wait a minute. So I want to make sure that you still want the language required with central office and building administrative and the rest of them stay preferred and add superintendent as a preference as well? Did I hear that correctly?
My personal opinion is that, I, I would agree with Mike on the central office, building administrator experience required.
Okay.
This time.
And superintendent preferred, but not required?
Right.
Correct? Okay. Just want to be sure we're all on the same page to start, thank you. These are great questions. I think that we have actually covered it all. Unless someone wants to go back to something? Madam President, that is all that I have.
Serena? Yes, I think you answered this already, but after you plug in all this information, then we'll get like a final document before it goes out?
Yes, you will, you will. And it'll be in the portal. So eventually all of these things will pop up in the, in the portal, yes.
So just to recap, so we're going to meet with you earlier, ask the board individually for our interview, where we can give you the, the traits or characteristics we want to be added to the superintendent job description, any other edits that we may, may have for the posting. In addition, I think at that time, if there's groups, we'll make sure to capture them, the focus groups and those, so that way that focus group schedule can come out for those dates. Because I, like I said, there's, I think we want to continue to make sure that we include as many people as broadly as possible. So there's going to be different days and times and then Zoom options as well.
Sure.
Okay.
So my recommendation is that.
And we'll also get back to you about the advertising once you get us the numbers. I'm just trying to recap all of our.
Nope, yep, the most immediate thing is probably going to be two things. One, scheduling the one-on-ones with you all so that we can get the characteristics and also you can answer the other questions that are part of the, the board interview questions. But then the second thing would be to show up those focus groups so that we can generate a focus group schedule, get that out to your community, let them know when the focus groups will be, you know, held. Meanwhile, we'll be working on all of these details. Emails will be flying to try and clean up what we still need to clean up so that we can get the posting solid and out. I think it's very close to being ready after we get the characteristics done. But we can get the posting, you know, out and up so we could start to generate some interest in applications as well.
So somewhere between.
So the January 9th meeting will be when you bring us the final posting then? It was, I just remembered, January 9th being brought up.
Maybe, because I can't speak for Mike in terms of one-on-one interviews. And, but I'm going to assume that we could probably get them in around the 3rd, 4th and 5th of January, provided your availability. The nice thing about Zoom is you could be on the beach somewhere and still, and still log in. I promise you, they're no longer than 15, 30, you know, 15 to 30 minutes. So provided we can get them all done, yes. And get that characteristics portion, which would really just be a list of bullets that we would add to that posting document, then at that ninth meeting, we should be able to bring that final document and get it approved.
Perfect.
Yeah, that'll be the target and the goal.
Yeah, and I can definitely commit to making sure that that happens before the 9th, but I will not be here the 9th. I know I've told some of you, but I will not be here the 9th.
Somewhere after the profile report and the first, and the presentation of the slate, we're going to have, we're going to have a closed session to review all of the candidates? Is that an open session? I'm trying to remember.
The profile, the, the presentation slate is open, that is.
But when we say we have, you know, 30 candidates and you're going to, and you're going to organize those for us.
In the different tiers, yes, yes, yes.
I didn't, so we're going to, also, we're going to have a meeting.
I won't be doing that meeting. Mike will be doing that meeting, so I'm going to make him a note to circle back around to. Erin, are you been the point person that he's been communicating with and Angela?
And Mother.
Okay, I will point, I will make Mike a note to circle back around to you on that day.
And I think because those are confidential and it's a personnel, we do that in closed session.
And I won't, since I won't be conducting, I can't give you a date. It's going to have to be based on Mike's availability, so I'll make him a note to find out about that. He might have told me, so I apologize. We're going to work with those March dates. That's a little ways away. It feels like a long way away, but once this gets started, it's not. It'll be really quick, yeah. The whole process will, will move, so.
Do you guys have any other questions or? Mike or Mary, anything else?
Well, please know you have. Well, please know you have our email addresses, you even have my cell phone number, and you have Mike's as well. And so it's been a pleasure to work with you all this evening. Thank you so much for hosting us and we look forward to moving the process along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Oh, boy. I forgot about that part, right? Thank you.
All right. Continuing on the board agenda, uh, on 5B, respond to the complaint's request for a formal hearing pursuant policy 9130. Complaint dated November 13th, 2023. Does anybody have a recommendation for action? Go ahead, Colleen.
Move to deny the complaint's request for a formal hearing and to issue a written decision. Complaint dated November 13th, 2023.
Any support, Mary? Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will submit a written decision. All right, unscheduled public comment. Kelly Myers?
So I'm, I'm assuming you are talking about the one that was submitted at the board meeting. And the reason I say I don't know is because all the people that had signed it were never notified that this was going on today. And all of these other people that signed it, and we're talking dozens and dozens of community members to sign that complaint. Your complaint doesn't give you an option to just outright deny your complaint. First of all, it's over the statutory time limit, you were supposed to respond before this, but it gives you the ability to either grant a hearing in front of the full board or to send it to a committee. So those were what your options were supposed to be, according to your own policies. But an outright rejection of the complaint that had absolute valid points using your own policies, which you violated, is actually pretty shocking. And it's going to be shocking to the dozens and dozens and in addition to the ones that have already turned it into you. And in addition to the one where your school board president took a copy of the signature page that was property of the board and sent it to the signer to shame her for signing it and even mentioned her name. And we brought this to your attention. This is a serious violation of so many things. And, and we sit here today and nothing's been done or said about that? That violates your board policies. You had a member of your board take a document that belonged to the board, take a picture of it and use it on social media to harass one of the people who signed. And, and you wonder why we're hesitant to hand over all these additional signatures to you. I, I'm really without words on that. It, it's, it's quite shocking. As for your EOP, the one that you said that you adopted, I believe in April, you adopted an EOP. You, you do know you have to have one for each building and for the sports complex. And it's due in a few days. And it would have to have been approved by the board. So your minutes don't say that you've approved an EOP for each building, which you're required to do. And it states so in the guidepost report as well that you didn't do it. So again, we're here just like we were two years ago before shooting with you not meeting the statutory requirement for your EOP review for all of your buildings. So I guess the question is, did you review and update the high school EOP and vote on that to approve it in April? No? That's not what your minutes say. That's not what the guidepost report says. The vulnerability study you did, you used the SEC report? That was not a vulnerability study. That wasn't even close to it. So I hope truly that what's in the guidepost report is not really actually what you used and actually did do a vulnerability study. As opposed to the crisis trauma inform, yes, there are agencies to do that. But I mean, you do know that people in this community actually are experts in that. You're just not doing a good job on everything and you're just keeping it all buried and you don't want to talk about it. And you just vote to silence everybody instead of just talking it out. Here's all our allegations, give us a chance to talk it out. But you just flat out deny it and again, you violated your own policies. Thank you, Kelly. Check.
I truly don't think you guys understand how painful it is to be here two years later, still dealing with this. How many times do we need to be here? How many times do we need to come here and try to ask for something? How many hours of our lives are going to be wasted sitting in front of you begging for some resignation or anything? How many days will we have to put aside for accountability? How many more times do you have to drag the victims' families here just to have some accountability? We're fed up and exhausted of fighting. It's unbelievable that over two years later, we're still asking for some form of accountability. I can't believe it. It's not right. There's nothing that you guys are bringing to this community or this board that is so valuable that you need to stay on this board, seriously. What is so valuable that you guys are bringing to our schools and our community that you feel the need that you guys need to stay? That's a question, you guys are able to answer that if you'd like. I'd like to get one thing clear while I'm up here. It's widely known that this is just a speech, but it's not. This is a directed talking to for people that have blood, have four kids on their hands. Two years of suffering, two years of unrelenting pain, two years of unbelievable depression. These past two years, we haven't gotten much. We've had fake doctors telling us not to talk about our trauma. We didn't get any crisis response team. We didn't get any of the support we needed and it's your fault. If you would have enforced your own code of conduct, we wouldn't be here today. For the love of God, even the judge that sentenced the shooter can acknowledge that we're an unbelievable amount of devastation and pain. Why can't you? Why is it that you can't look past yourself and give not only the survivors some form of relief? Every board meeting I've attended, I've seen Buck, Tate's dad and his wife sit there. The last board meeting, I seen Hannah's father and I seen my friend Clay here. Even with the brother of a fallen classmate, Justin, you have the nerve to make smirks and roll your eyes on countless other insults. It's hard to see that. And I'd like to turn it around, ask the people behind me sitting in the audience. Would you, any of you guys laugh or roll your eyes in the face of a parent that lost a kid? Unbelievable. So again, two years later, I'm still here, I'm still asking, we're all asking for something, some form of accountability or anything. A resignation would be nice, but I honestly truly doubt that that will happen. And I get my hopes up every time. Also, I'd like to ask, we're, I'm missing some board members up here, I'm not seeing a lot of them. Um, where are they? Vicki, Heather? I'm not seeing them.
Thank you. Giselle?
How are you guys doing tonight?
Good, you?
Not great. I honestly don't know how you're okay, but that's on you. I want to talk to you about the reality of strength and healing. I want you to hear the words that express the pain and suffering that we live through every second of every day. There are students who have found ways to truly heal, to find happiness, to move forward. And I am so incredibly grateful that they have found peace. And I'm so incredibly proud of how far they have come. But some of us cannot say the same. There is this idea that is portrayed in Oxford of strength, community, and healing. But what I don't think you understand is the reality of what being strong looks like. I don't think you understand the truth of healing and what it looks like for some of us behind the scenes, behind the mask. The hardest thing isn't the pain I feel. The hardest thing is believing I need to move through the grief and be happy already. The most painful thing is expecting me to have picked myself up from the fall, expecting me to have healed while I am still on the ground, the wound still spilling out. The moment reality hit that we have to live with what has happened was when I went to bed and I realized I would have to wake up the next morning and four beautiful humans still wouldn't be here. It feels as though you believe healing means moving on. As for me, as for me, healing isn't pretty. As for me, I'm not okay. I'm transferring back to OVA because I cannot make it through the day in that building without having heavy heart pounding, hands shaking, body trembling, sweating, hyperventilating panic attacks and throwing up because I cannot leave the district. Because the last of people responsible for the pain and suffering of so many children and families, until they're gone, I cannot truly find closure or begin to heal. As for me, healing consists of thoughts like maybe I'm not meant to heal or healing isn't worth it or what if others notice? It consists of not feeling real, thinking that relapse equals failing, feeling crazy or alien, losing hope that it will get easier, severe anxiety and panic attacks, feeling stuck in a cycle, beginning to hide everything again, all of the bad habits resurfacing and validating my personal experiences because I guess it could be worse. Overwhelming depression, not knowing what comes next or where to go, constant deep thoughts and massive feelings or complete numbness, resenting healing because it's so damn painful, feeling unfixable. Basic tasks become overwhelmingly difficult again, feeling like a burden to anyone who tries to offer help, mentally drowning, hygiene worsening and losing the energy to perform minimal self-care skills, feeling isolated again, absolutely no motivation, using all of the energy left to simply survive, being pulled back all the way to square one and starting over every single day, begging, pleading, no more. This is all my heart can take, there is nothing left to break. And yet every day we wake and find a way to continue. Still, after two years, I wake up and I am barely hanging on, I am burning out and fading. I want to sleep and eat, I want to take care of myself and my health, I want to be present. I want to live moment by moment and not be afraid to really feel every single moment, I want to free my mind. I want to go to sleep feeling peace in my soul and wake up feeling fully alive. I want to feel my soul, I want to feel love and I want to feel it overflowing through every port to everything and everyone I cross paths with. Death was never an option, I want to come back to life. And I wonder, do you feel anything? I cannot even make myself believe that you do, not with the way that you treat us, not with the way that you treat the parents and the siblings of children who look down on us from heaven, whom will never return. I realize now that responsibility may be something you never accept. Because in order to do so, you admit your part in the death of four innocent children who we lost far too soon, who we lost due to negligence and lack of responsibility and accountability. And that is a trend that is all too common in this district to this day. Do you still experience any of these feelings? Because if you do, then you understand even a portion of what we wake up to every single day. And I cannot fathom how any human being with a beating heart can stand seeing so many people truly suffering and do nothing, taking no action. You took over half of our funding to pay for a report telling you that you're guilty and still you do nothing. You bring nothing to this school, this district, or this community that is worth assisting in inflicting this kind of suffering on such innocent and kind souls. If you care, if you have hearts, if you truly want healing to begin, if you want any good to come from this, then remove yourselves. Your job is not more valuable than the peace and safety of children. And please know that if you choose to do nothing, to say nothing, then I have no choice but to believe that you are truly just okay with being a part of this pain and suffering. You choose who you truly are and prove it. If you want to assist in true and honest healing and fill this place with love and light the way it should be, then leave.
Linda Jo White?
Good evening. My name is Linda Jo White. I'm here to be a voice for the legacies of the seven Madison Tate, Justin, and Hannah. I am a resident of Oxford and I'm a mother of a 17-year-old who's a junior in the Oxford system. As a former corporate quality auditor and trainer in the automotive manufacturing sector, I'm prop, I'm prompted to respectfully come before you this evening as a result of the incident that occurred last Wednesday, less than 24 hours after the board meeting. And last Wednesday, there was a reported incident, right? Deja sends out a letter notifying only the parents of Oxford and the guardians. And for many parents, the guardians is a problem because then she sent out a subsequent letter to the same folk on Thursday saying that a BTAM determined there was no threat, no intent, or means to act on a video. However, it also made a contradictory statement saying a safety plan had been put in place for the student, which will be managed and monitored, okay? So I spent 25 years identifying, evaluating, and resolving non-conformances in systems. And I'm more than familiar with analyzing responses to documentation, notifications, when somebody does something wrong, right? When there's a non-conformance in the system. And had those letters been submitted to me as a lead auditor, as a trainer of trainers, I would have rejected them because the basis of being vague, contradictory, failing to identify a root cause, failing to address the root cause, so it didn't happen again. Now Deja's letter said that the incident was reviewed and evaluated by a threat assessment team. And we deserve to understand the policies, the SEOs, the, these things, SOPs rather, EOPs that are in place. Because as these incidents have occurred, right? There's, there's ways, there's opportunity in the midst of this crisis. I checked the appropriate box on the form this evening to talk with somebody. It says, you know, like, right? And I, I really am here because I understand that while there might not be the resignations that are asked, I, I respectfully say sometimes we don't know what to do, right? I have to believe in the core of your hearts and humanity that you're hurting as well, that, but sometimes we don't know what to do. Sometimes the expressions are just like a deer in headlights, right? And I respect that and I understand that. I also understand we bring our own trauma sometimes, right? Not only am I a mom, 25 quality, years of quality system auditing. I'm 58 years old, but I was gang raped when I was 19. It took me 26 years to begin to engage for change, to become whole again. And the last thing I want is to see these young people. So I'm begging you to see this crisis as an opportunity. I'm begging you to ask yourself, okay, if, if I can't do this, then bring in somebody who will look at those root causes. Again, I checked the box, um, I'm thanking you for your time. I'm looking forward to constructive, positive, and restorative corrective actions, right? You have an opportunity and, um, I want you to know I'm Linda Jo White. I'm here to be a voice, not going anywhere. And I'm trying to figure out how, how I can help, right? How I can help. So thank you, I appreciate you. Merry Christmas to you all next week.
Thank you. Mark?
You mentioned the profile of a candidate and your expectations for that candidate. You've mentioned the profile of a student. So we are considering the profile of a board member. So as I sit here today, I look at you. We have a board member that's been gone for over a month, no communications to our community. We have a board member that's been gone for over a month, no communications to our community. This is the president, the leader of this school, is not showing up to the board meetings. Do you have any problem with that? Shouldn't you be addressing that and talking about that in open dialogue as to why your leader is not here? And then we have three elected officials here that I actually voted for. And then we have three, okay, and then we have Mary. And then we have another appointee. But you chose to put an appointed person to run these meetings? Why is not an elected official running? I think Amanda, you should be running the meeting. You were elected, or even James, or Mike. Mary, we really don't want to hear from you. We'd like you to leave. I think you're probably here because of your own trauma that you've had in your life. That's the only thing I can come up with. And I would highly recommend you leave. And, you know, you're sitting here. Two of the people that are talking about numbers tonight are bankrupt and they're sitting here and telling us about the numbers of this district. And you ran the numbers. If you can't run your own finances, we really don't want to hear your opinion. So maybe we should get some qualified people in here to address these issues. And it really goes back two years ago. We were looking, are you familiar with the Michigan Open Meetings Act? Are you immune from that? Do you think you're immune from that? You're not immune from it. So we're looking back at the records and we're looking at the Attorney General's communications with the board and there's nothing on the record. It was never discussed. It was never, it was never discussed. You guys decided to block the Attorney General of Michigan and you didn't even do it in an open meeting. And for two years, you've ignored it. And then you go on and you spent $3 million that could have been spent tearing down and rebuilding the area in the school where this tragedy happened. Instead, you spent it trying to cover yourselves. The funny thing is, the $3 million you spent exposed you. It exposed your crimes against this community and your failures. And that's why Heather's not here. So if she can't show up for the meetings, the least she could do is send a letter of resignation out of respect for all of us. But basically, we've got financial corruption and we've got a group all trying to cover for each other and we're unraveling this and we're going to continue to do so. And, you know, why don't you give us all an early Christmas present? Why don't you give us all, you know, just give us a little hope, if you have a heart? Do you have a heart, Mary?
Thanks, Mark. Going on to item agenda number seven, scheduled activities. Holiday break begins December 25th, or is school on Friday? And then you can see the list going on by that. We will be back in school on January 8th and then our board meeting on January 9th. There is no administrative clarification. Any final board comments?
Just one thing. I just wanted to clarify for, I guess, the people in the audience. Heather let us know weeks ago that she could not be here on Mondays because she teaches a class. So that's where she is.
Any other board comments? All right, great. This meeting is adjourned.